Extent that the porch is going to.
Yeah, some of the homes had stoops, but I just did.
Yeah.
It just, I, will it be on the same line as the rest of the homes?
More or less same highs, uh, depth from, from the street as the stoop. Uh, there's also other, um, uh, front porches, front, uh.
Well, there are homes that have stoops on, okay, there's sort of a Kate Cott style house that has stoops, several steps. Uh, and then there are some that are, you know, the garage comes out and there's a stoop that's even with the garage. Uh, but there, there are a couple that have stoops. I'm just saying that that distance on, from the, the, the street to those lines is, is consistent.
Yeah.
And, you know, you know, what will the impact be of, you know, moving from twenty-four point or twenty-six point seven to nineteen point seven? And then the rest of the character is other variants that come forward on the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, I think, you know, where we.
I mean, I think that touches on the third criteria where, uh, it asks whether the requested variance is substantial.
If I, if I may comment, it's also a corner property.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, so when you, you know, look down the roadway, there are variables and there's vegetation and trees that block that view from other neighbors. So, um, you don't necessarily get that straight view straight down like a Arlington Cemetery type, you know, it's still.
No, I think, I, I think that the, the representation that the property has is, that, that you've put forward is, is substantial improvement. You know, that, that, you know, the plans. What I'm concerned about is, you know, the next, the next neighbor that comes in and wants a fifteen foot variance. And the next one, and then we have, you know, homes that look like, you know, other avenues in our village, or there's.
Yeah.
Wide variation.
Denser and denser.
Correct. Uh, and, and this, this has such a uniform consistency that it's different than other areas in the village.
Yeah.
That's, that's the, and it's a challenge, which the board have to face, and that's, that's, that's the, you know, the question I have. So, you know, what's enough? Is, is that, is going from twenty-six point seven to nineteen point seven the limit? Or, you know, where do we then have drawn the line five to ten years from now, or whatever it might be when other variants is come forward?
I mean, I would, I would say that I think it's reasonable, uh, that to consider kind of, you know. It can kind of go back and forth between a, kind of a consensus depth from the street. Uh, the, the porch is gonna extend, but there's a, a garage, just a little bit, uh.
Even though the numbers, uh, don't look like it, we're really just grabbing four point four.
Yep.
Feet.
Yeah.
Uh, in addition, but it would really come to the existing walkway that's there now at the, it's seven feet.
Yeah, I think the appearance is fine, I'm just worried about the precedent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and how we guard, and, you know, how we as zoning board protect against, again, the, the request that comes in says, well, we wanna move within fifteen feet of the street.
Right.
And here we have a lovely addition, and it's gonna improve, and it, and it will be lovely, and it will look fantastic on the plans.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, and it, but it substantially changes the character of the neighborhood.
Right. Um, yeah, I mean, that's definitely a concern, I, you know, it's, it's a matter of, of scale and, you know. Scale in proportion to the, that particular house, uh, how far it is from the street. And, you know, I would say that, uh, that, that the depth of the porch that's being proposed is pretty modest.
It is.
It's not gonna impinge upon the front, front yard, uh, to really change the, the character as it is.
This individual, yeah, this individual variance won't. I agree, change the, the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
The precedent will.
True.
So. So, okay. Not necessarily true, it's the potential to.
Yeah.
Substantially.
But also we can set a precedent that, you know, we think if people want to put an outside porch on four point four.
Proportional to, you know, the existing property, in this sense, this is proportional, so, you know, that proportionality is one of the factors of consideration. How is proportional to the existing property and the setbacks that exist?
Uh, one of the other criteria we look at is whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible, feasible to the applicant.
I think in coming up with the design with an architect, my wife and her wants and our, our, our wants. Uh, basically, we came up with the porch that was in size and, and character with the existing residence. As it sits, it's not a two-story or anything, the top of the roof is gonna, uh, come underneath the second floor windows. Uh, so it's not gonna, they're not building out, uh, two floors, um, in that aspect. We're just basically, the seven-foot porch away from the house really gives us about six to six and a half foot of, of space to walk on. By the time you put the railing on and, and some of the other stuff that, uh, we have planned. Um, so I think it's in proportion to the residence as well as the neighborhood itself.
I think we've addressed, uh, whether the requested variance is substantial. It's kind of relatively modest, like one story, uh, like we just, uh, discussed. Uh, another criteria is whether the request will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, environment of, of the neighborhood.
Right, right now, our property is, uh, point three eight acres, uh, which equates to about just over fourteen thousand square foot. The current residence sits on about eleven percent, a little over eleven percent of that property. Um, by adding this addition to it, we're gonna be on a little thirteen percent. Uh, we're adding basically two hundred and fifty-two square foot, uh, to the residence. And I don't, I don't see that as a, a big act impact on the neighborhood itself, um, with the size of the lots that, that my neighbors have.
Mm-hmm.
In the neighborhood, both behind us, um, some, some people have swimming pools that, that were put in there now. Some people have, um, other frontage, uh, vegetation and landscaping that bolsters, um, their house. And I think that's what we're asking here as well, uh, for the porch.
Okay.
And I, I don't think it's gonna, uh, be anything that's gonna stand out in the neighborhood, um, as being too much.
Mm-hmm. And it, one of, uh, some of the things we just discussed before was, it's not going to impact, uh, sightlines of any views of, uh, of the neighbors. It's not gonna be kind of peering into your neighbors, it's not gonna be an awkward situation where you're on top of them. Uh, but there are other front porches in the neighborhood, it's not a abnormal, uh, uh, proposal. Uh, we have plantings, we kind of blend in with, with the neighborhood.
Chairman, if I may as well, um, one of the things in our residence is the front of our house gets extremely hot during the day. That causes us to have to close our shades on a regular basis during the day. And obstruct our view from the street and from the activity of the street, and basically the beauty of the neighborhood. We believe by putting this covered front porch on as well, that it's gonna assist us to leave our, our shades up and be able to participate in the neighborhood. And, and view the neighborhood as, as we all wanted to.
Good, yeah, shade the front of the house as well, make it, make it cooler. Uh, and then, uh, the final one is whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. Uh, I think, you know, judging by the, the, the other criteria that, uh, for this particular, uh, proposal. It's, uh, not quite as important as the, the other four.
All right, so if you are ready, you can make a motion to approve the variance, and just keep in mind too, if there are any conditions you wanna place on the variance, you're free to do that as well.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
I just state my reservations regarding the impact on the neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay.
I approve.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I, I would say is just make sure that there's not gonna be a drainage issue with your, your neighbors. You know, you speak to the architect and just make sure about that.
Great.
So, that's, uh, five yes votes, your variance is granted.
Great, you're welcome, enjoy. Okay, uh, agenda item number two is, uh, the applicant fifty-six dash sixty-one First Street LLC. Uh, regarding two seventy-five Hudson Street. The property is located on the south side of Hudson Street, approximately three hundred and fifty feet west from the intersection of Duncan Avenue and Hudson Street. Uh, variance is from section one seven two dash nine F eleven of the Village Zoning Code. To allow for the addition of multifamily housing on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Uh, the proposed variances that increase or create new conformities are, one, to allow a lot area of two thousand forty-seven square feet. When the code requires forty-eight hundred square feet. Two, to allow a front yard setback of thirty-one point three feet when the code requires forty feet. Three, to permit only sixteen off-street parking spaces when the code requires eighteen. Four, to allow a total side yard setback of fifteen point nine feet when the code requires sixty feet. Five, to allow a lot coverage of twenty-four point seven percent when the code requires only twenty percent. And six, to allow for no building offset when the code requires five feet at forty feet. Uh, the proposed variances for the pre-existing non-conformities that are remaining but necessary because of the added density are, one. To permit a lot area of point four two acres when the code requires one acre. Two, to allow for a lot width of one oh nine point one feet when the code requires one hundred and fifty feet. Three, to permit one side yard setback of point eight five feet when the code requires thirty feet. Four, to allow rear yard setback of point three two feet when the code requires thirty feet. And five, to permit a distance between buildings of seven point five feet when the code requires twenty feet. The property is situated at section one oh seven, block one, lot three in the village of Cornwall and Hudson, said lot also being known as two seventy-five Hudson Street. The property is located in the SR Suburban Residential Zoning District and the CBS Central Business Shopping Subdistrict. The Zoning Board of Appeals will consider all verbal and or written statements from all persons interested in the proposed variances at the above time and place. Copies of the variance application, environmental assessment form, plans, and any other information submitted in support of the variance application are available for review. At the Code Enforcement Office located at fifty Shore Road during normal business hours. Uh, which guys looked, uh, I guess we should state for the record that, uh, this is a continuance of, uh, the same proposal. Uh, from a month ago, I don't have the exact date, but it was June.
June ninth.
June ninth. Uh, and the board had requested some additional information, uh, regarding, uh, I guess. Articulation of the sidewall, um, and, uh, uh, I don't know, I, I think, I forget the.
I, I know the board had asked for some information, maybe comparison on nearby properties, I didn't see anything with respect to that.
Yeah, well, Dean will, yeah, we go, will.
Okay, yeah, just hold on, just gonna, uh. Right, so we, uh, and some ju- just additional, uh, renderings. Uh, I don't know if you guys just wanna give a, just a brief statement of the proposal and, uh, kind of the, if you wanna introduce the new information.
Yes, um, good evening, everyone, my name's John Capello, I'm an attorney with Jacobowitz and Gubitz. I'm here with, uh, John Perkins, the project architect, Anthony Celentano, the, uh, project, uh, surveyor. And Dean, uh, Golemis, the applicant. Um, you are correct, we have an application here, I know it sounds a lot, eleven variances, but this is, as the prior one, a pre-existing, um, lot. So there are only four of them, I believe, that were actually in, increasing a bit to allow, um, the applicant to. Uh, provide three new additional, uh, one-bedroom units, um, of much-needed, uh, decent, um. You know, rental housing for the, for the village. Uh, we have submitted with the application an addendum that goes through the test that you just went through on your, uh, last one. To balance the benefit to the applicant versus any perceived detriment to the community or neighborhood using the five factors. And we, uh, provided an addendum going through it, uh, presented to the board at the last, uh, meeting. And I believe that is correct, the three, uh, major comments related to, uh, the elevation and the articulation along, uh, the one wall. Uh, which John, uh, will, uh, present in a couple seconds. There was also a question regarding parking, so we did submit, and I will go through very briefly, um, some of the parking provisions. In other municipalities, um, in the area that show that parking of two units per one-bed, two spaces per one-bedroom unit. Is excessive given modern parking standards, so we did provide you with a, uh, a list. And I could go through it very quickly of other municipalities and what they require for one-bedroom, uh, units. And then finally, Dean will, uh, present the question that you asked regarding the, uh, character of the neighborhood. And the, um, location of buildings surrounding the area and the density. And he has several pictures, uh, that he will quickly, uh, present to you. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to John, because I think that was a major question, and, uh, John has, uh, addressed it a bit, so John?
Thank you, John. My name is John Perkins, I'm the architect for Dean Golemis. I'd like to first offer you some updated color renderings of the project to show you the new version of what we've come up with. To make it a little bit more pleasing to the vocabulary of the town, the village.
Thank you.
One of the variances, number six, I believe it was, spoke to the offset on the facade or the distance on the sidewall of the property. Um, although we cannot comply with that variance or eliminate that variance, we did speak to it and address it. And you could see through the, um, rendering, that it did provide a little differentiation, a nice shadow line on that sidewall. On the left side of the building as well as the interior at the parking area. Um, I'll kind of speak to that in a moment, but, uh, just to acknowledge, we did some other improvements to make it hearken to more of the vocabulary of the village. Cornwall and Hudson with gable roofs as opposed to hip roofs, uh, little scalloped shingles at the gables. To give a little accent and a little vocabulary to the, uh, the materials on the outside of the house. As well as many different trim details, um, at the center, uh, trim bands, which is, uh, differentiation between the floors. As well as bed molding, cornice moldings and the facial colors. Um, tried to, you know, spruce up the windows a little bit and, uh, provide a little bit more color and interest to the, uh, to the exterior of the building. Um, hopefully making it a little bit more pleasant, um, to look at. Um, so we gotta just kind of point out where the, uh, improvements were made to the exterior of the building. Um, the left-hand side of the building is really where we're questioning where, um, that long side. Now, uh, you know, um, existed, we couldn't shift the, the full offset of, uh, five foot. Which is required by the zoning code in order to kind of eliminate that zoning code. Because what would happen, it would encroach upon our parking area as well as our walkway at the interior of that. So, although, again, we addressed it, we couldn't eliminate it, but we did address it by creating this one-foot offset. To cut and shift this portion of the building to, again, create that shadow line, as you can kind of see at the.
That's his rear, oh, that's right there.
Yep, and you can see on the other versions here, this is that left side facade that we were speaking about, that gives you that step back. Now, again, you'll notice the, uh, the ends of the building were created as gables as opposed to the hip roofs. Um, I think that creates a more pleasant experience, creates more of an opportunity for, uh, a facade, uh, detail that's more interesting. Um, for the building, a little more historic, um, to this portion of, uh, the village. Uh, at the front of the building, we added some, uh, again, vinyl accents at the, um, at the gables. Created a gable end as opposed to a hip end, added some shutters and trim bands around that, as well as a trim band around the exterior of the building. So, broke up the facade, um, as much as we possibly could to create a little bit more interest in, uh, harking back to a more historic value to the building. As far as the exterior elevations, the renderings, I think, provide a better, um, description as to what we're creating. Again, this being the left facade, this is that step back, the one foot, the storage area remains exactly the same way. The parking side area remains exactly the same way, again, just shifted one foot, um, same, same structure, same functions.
Great. John, number one, on the, uh, the parking, you know, the, did you find any that had the same parking standards as Cornwall? Cornwall and Hudson have two spaces per unit, you've listed a number around here that have one, one point one, one point five, one two five.
Sure there are some that have two, but I think the trend is to go lower because, um, first of all, environmental standards. Having additional parking and excess paving really doesn't, um, solve anyone. And I think if you look at some of the villages that are close to, um, Walden is, um, one point two five. Beacon, which is a, you know, I would say a similar Cornwall and Hudson, they're at.
One point one.
Two five, um, East Fishkill and Fishkill are both at one, uh, five, New Hall. Which really does have a parking issue compared to, is at one point, uh, one, on your, uh, their new codes. Cause I think, you know, the fact that modern standards is going for, um, trying to reduce, uh, pavement. And I think, uh, most of these one-bed, it is either one or two, you know, people that live there. And admittedly, we have nine units with sixteen spaces, so it's really, uh, you know, two, um, short of two. So it's, I'm not good at math, but I would say it's probably just one point seven.
You're two and a half, oh, yeah, it would, it would be thirteen and a half, right, if you, so you're two and a half over. Maybe go sixteen, yeah, 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 so you're good, yeah.
So, um, you know, with that, I, you know, I think it is, um, consistent with, with good planning. And there shouldn't be a problem, I think we've provided some, um, oral testimony based upon its history. That that parking lot, you know, with the number of spaces now, you know, adding three units, but also adding some spaces is very, very, um, seldom filled. So with, with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, to John, unless he's, you know, if you wanted to say, to provide you some of the photos, some information. He's gathered the garden throughout me.
Evening, everybody, sorry I have to work last. If you guys have seven, eight by ten photographs numbered on the back from one to twenty-seven, I don't know if you can go through all twenty-seven, up to you guys. What, what I did, guys, is I went to, I went to, uh, through the village and I went right down the street from, uh, west. This is my property here on the map, two seventy-five, these numbers written are by the county tax map department, they correspond to the address. They're not all right, some are a little off, at two thirty-seven, it's nearly two thirty-seven, but this is, gives a good guide. I, I outlined as best I could the property lines, they're on your maps, but faint. Uh, we're starting here at two fifty-nine Hudson Street, which is picture number one. And, again, to show that my project is keeping with the spirit of the neighborhood, uh, the porch for this is approximately thirteen feet off of the sidewalk. And my property would be thirty feet off the sidewalk. If you go to picture number two, that's two seventy-six Hudson Street. Uh, that is directly across the street from my property, and that has a parking lot directly in front of the building adjoining the sidewalk, as I requested to do. Uh, picture number three is, uh, the Ashcroft Realty Office, which is directly on the sidewalk, which is adjacent to my property. Uh, picture number four is just another picture of the parking lot of, uh, the music man, the main street music. And, uh, two seventy is, excuse me, picture number five is also two seventy Main Street. Just showing how the, uh, parking lot is fairly well camouflaged by the simple road shrubs, which. Picture number six, same. Picture number seven is interesting, picture number seven is two sixty-seven and two sixty-nine Hudson Street, which is my next-door neighbor on the opposite side. Uh, the distance between those two buildings is nine feet. My addition will be in excess of forty feet from, uh, number two sixty-nine. So, he has a neighbor that's nine feet away from him. Picture, picture eight, glance over, picture nine is just an overview of the picture, how it looks down the street. Number ten is gonna be, uh, two sixty-one and two fifty-nine Main Street, both have no parking. And are parked, and are directly on the sidewalk, and they are, you know, three hundred feet from my, my property. Eleven, just a close-up. Picture number twelve shows the distance between the two, and I believe it's about eight and a half feet difference, uh, between, space between the two buildings. And again, right on the sidewalk. Number thirteen shows the, uh, parking lot of the gas station there in town, which is, you know, commercial space parking lot, parking right on Main Street. With no kind of shrubbery or barrier or beautification whatsoever, which of course I'll have. Number fourteen, number fourteen is showing us, I'm trying to make sure I've addressed right.
Yes, it cites dentist office.
Two forty-seven, it's going up Duncan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's around the corner Duncan and Hudson, uh. I believe it's two sixty-seven Hudson, no, no, it's not, excuse me.
That's two forty-seven, two forty, two sixty-one into, into two forty-seven.
Forty-seven, correct. Yeah, two forty-seven, that's an eight-unit, right on the street, it both is directly on Hudson and Duncan, four parking spots allotted to it. I spoke to the chief of police, Steve Dixon, there's never been a complaint or a parking issue, you know, attributed to that building, as far as he knows. All right, picture number fifteen is gonna be, uh, where, uh, JHS Jewelers is, again, it's directly on the street. They have their own parking lot, which is directly on Idlewild, but, again, just directly on the street. My project will more, will be fif- thirty feet off of Hudson Street. So, again, it's keeping with the spirit of the neighborhood. Sixteen, just another one. Picture number seventeen is number seven Idlewild, which is two buildings off of the intersection by the bandstand. That's a three-unit building, they have two, two parking spots directly on the street, only two units for three, only two parking spaces for three units. Now, that's, Idlewild's an interesting, uh, example for us, because on that street, we have seven, eleven, fifteen. And twenty-one Idlewild, twenty-one Idlewild, or if we can just go to number seven, or number eleven, excuse me. This is, eight, picture eighteen is number eleven Idlewild, is also three units, uh, two two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom. I know this because I lost a bid to buy it. Uh, that has no parking at all, zero. And again, spoke with Chief Dixon, there are no parking complaints or issues on Idlewild. Now, this is the, a, a really good litmus test, this is number nineteen, pict- picture number nineteen, this is twenty-one Idlewild. Twenty-one Idlewild, again, I lost a bid for it recently, nine, eleven units total, nine of which are two bedroom units. Two of which are one-bedroom units, they require, according to my code today, twenty-six and a half parking spots. They have eighteen parking spots. And Chief Steve Dixon, there's no parking issues there.
So, that one, there's, there's, there's eighteen in the, the.
There's eighteen parking spots.
On-site parking.
Yes, but they're, but they require twenty-six and a half, if you could go by the same math of, of today's code, right?
Mm-hmm.
Nine, two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units, should be twenty-six and a half, if my math is right.
Okay.
And they have eighteen, so they have a, they have a, a shortfall of eight and a half parking spots.
Yeah, and that's a pretty good, uh, sort of parallel property.
Right, right, and it's a well-kept, beautiful property, I mean, it's, it's really a gem. So, so my point is, on that street, we have eighteen spots, no spots, no spots, two spots. So we have twenty spots on this street, twenty units of parking on that street, twenty spots across those buildings for eleven. Uh, that's a one unit, that's one single family home with no parking, so eleven, twelve, eighteen, eighteen units. That has twenty parking spots, and you guys go idlewild all the time, I do. Not only do all those people live there, we have a restaurant, we have a jewelry store, we have another. Not only do all those people live there, we have a restaurant, we have a jewelry store, we have another residence. I'm on Idlewild every day, and I've never seen parking. So it's just a good, I, I need to let, I need two more than I have, which I don't think is gonna be any kind of burden on the villagers like.
Does the municipal lot, I just don't know offhand, does the municipal lot allow for overnight parking or?
Yeah, you can park there. A lot of those people park in there. And there's no restrictions for overnight parking on that, this street parking lot?
Correct, unless it's, but again, I have, I have all the properties in the area, and I will assign parking to, I own 223 Hudson Street. I just, I close on Monday on 202 Hudson Street. I have other parking alternatives if my tenants want off-street parking. And I can't provide it to them at site, but I really do not believe that'll be the case. So, we can just skip through here, a couple of pictures of parking lot, twenty-one Idlewild. And if we can go to picture number twenty-three, this is on Duncan Avenue. This is number nine and seven Duncan Avenue. It says two nines there, but one nine seven. Those are both two or three, one's a three unit, one's a two. And that has no parking, zero. And again, seventy-eight Duncan on top of the hill. I never see any kind of problems parking. Just another shot of it, picture twenty-four. And if we go down the street a little more now, we'll be continuing beyond Duncan. Picture number twenty-five, two four, 247 Duncan was the eight unit that we spoke about. The beige hole in this picture is number 241, which is three residential units, the house with the red door. No parking, not in the front, not in the back, nothing, zero. Also, every one of these buildings is directly on the sidewalk with no green space whatsoever. And this is twenty-six, just another shot of it. Then we go right across the street from these buildings, which will be right on the corner where we pull into the elementary school. The blue house that we all know on the corner when you go on to Painters and you go around here and park. This is a six u, a six unit building. I do not know what the makeup of the units are, two bedrooms, one bedrooms. I do not know, but I believe there's, I believe there's a total of nine bedrooms, so however that's broken up.
I thought that was commercial on the lot.
Commercial on the bottom.
Financial, okay.
On the bottom. The rest is, so there's commercial and five residential. Zero parking, not one parking spot, not one piece of green space. So what I'm proposing is, is certainly more green space than all of these properties.
And just the, the change, currently, the property has how many spots?
My property.
The, the, 275 Hudson.
Eighteen right now.
We're proposing, we're proposing sixteen for nine units.
I think I have thirteen spots.
Okay, so there's thirteen right now.
I believe thirteen. Might be twelve, might be, might be twelve.
And just, I just, if I can just get a little clarity, those sixteen spots include, like, so right here where it's right up next to the building, does that count as a spot?
Well, that's not the scale exactly, so it won't be that, it won't be that narrow, but probably. These are artist's renderings, just give you a rough, rough drawing.
Sure, sure.
So, so I'm sure that that, that may very well be a spot, but it will be the minimum parking spot. You know, there's, there's standards, and they will meet those standards.
So currently, we run along the side of this building, coming along here. Move on to.
Thirteen, fourteen spots.
Right now.
And then we're gonna re-strive from here, bring them away from this building, along this, but I'm gonna put parking lot here. And we're putting three additional spots from here.
Which again, in addition to this parking spot, we're still gonna have this whole area of green space.
Okay. And then my other question is, have you had any complaints from your neighbor about people reversing out of that lot or trying to get out of that lot and hitting the building? I think it's the asphalt, I thought I saw a letter.
Yes, there's some things here now.
Oh, okay.
Probably to speak to that. What I'd like to say to that is, these are pictures of her building. I don't know the last time they've been painted. I've spoke to her about it. I've offered to put parking bumpers in, cement bumpers, put a guardrail in. I'm trying to be good neighbor, I spoke to her about it. I'm willing to do that, if that's her concern. I offered that to her. I did, however, speak with Chief Steve Dixon, and I have correspondence from him. And there's never been a report to the police department on an incident report or an accident report of a car strike in her building. I'm not saying she's not telling the truth, but if it happened, it was over twenty-two years ago. Now, I know the previous owner, he was at the last meeting with me, where I bought the building from. I spoke to him, he's never heard of a car striking the building. It can happen, I can't take away that, but she's worried about it. It can happen, but I have offered to put either a guardrail up or those cement bollards that will be anchored into the asphalt. I, I wanna be good neighbor, I don't want her to worry that her building's gonna be struck. I would also like to note that we are not applying for more parking spaces against your building that are already there. These are already existing parking spots, we're not adding more spots to that side of the building. I've never seen anybody back up from my parking lot into, onto Hudson Street.
Got it.
But we're not proposing additional parking spaces against your building. I'll take, I want her to be comfortable when she goes to work there, Realtor. I said this to you, I believe, I, I, I'll do whatever I need to do to make you comfortable. I'm not looking to make you worry, this is what I'm driving you.
Okay, why don't we, if, if anyone from the audience would like to comment on anything, please feel free. Just introduce yourself, name, address.
My name is Tara Ashcroft Kaufman, and I'm power of the building to the immediate south of the 275 apartment property. And it was quite surprising to see this application with so many variances and such an undersized lot to ask to put more apartments on there. I mean, you see every day, residents are parking on Hudson Street. I, I walk every day, I can see the same cars parked there at the same time. So people who live in apartments are parking on Hudson Street. The, the village is tight as it is, half the time there's no parking spots. Sometimes it's empty, but, you know, there's many parts of the day when there's no parking down there at all, and the village lot fills up fairly quickly. So I see it a little different way. Cars backing out onto Hudson Street is common from all those, on that whole side over there, to get out of a parking spot that they pulled off into, to get out. Backing into Hudson Street is very, very common, and all along that area there. The lot coverage concerns me with drainage. Where is the snow gonna go when you have a, a large snowfall? Where, where, where will that be put? You know, when the entire lot is filled up with buildings? There is drainage issues in that area. We have a sun pump whenever it rains heavy or snow melt or whatever, we have to pump water out of our basement constantly. So there's an issue over there. Snow storage, emergency vehicles, can a fire truck get in there? Can ambulance get in there and get out with somebody who needs assistance?
The fire department said they could.
Those are all concerns, and I would, I would be looking at the safety and of the people who live there.
Okay. Yeah, could you, I guess maybe the, you know, one thing we haven't really discussed too much that was brought up was the, the drainage. I know the, it's actually reducing, cause you're removing hardscape of existing parking and then replacing it with, with building, which has a roof and gutter.
In addition, we're collecting all the roof leers and we're putting a, in the front here, a drywall to collect any additional wells, so that will help her. Right now, there's nothing there, and it just runs onto her property, but we'll be collecting that and then putting it away from her property.
That, that a new drywall that's going in? What, what drains in there? Is it the?
All the roof leers, houses, the additions. And we'll pitch everything away from her building. We have a repaid parking lot, everything will be pitched away, away from her, we, we put that into consideration. Get it into the municipal drainage system, which is right out in front. It'll alleviate some of those concerns.
And to speak to her point about people parking on Hudson Street and other tenants parking, I just wanna be clear, it's not my tenants. When I spoke to Ms. Ashcroft about parking, where was she parked? In my parking lot, where there's plenty of open spaces all day long. So, you know, I can't say if whether tenants are parking on Hudson Street. I'm sure people all day long park, come and go, that's what the Main Street does. But we all live in Cornwall, I think we all know that there really is not a parking issue on Hudson Street. And again, to my point, she and her sister have parked in my parking lot on many occasions to go into their building, which has no. So if, if a tenant from some building is parking on the street because they want to or a visitor, that's why the spots are there to be used. Again, that's not, it's not because my parking lot is full.
I, I would point out to the board too, that, you know, we're seeking those variances here that will always exceed without some of the specific issues, especially drainage, this will have to go back to, this board grants the variances. It will go back to the planning board, their engineering consultant is part of the team, and they would look at everything Mr. Solotano just said about the leaders and the drainage to ensure that it's appropriately collected, to improve the, improve the project, the area rather than.
Yeah, I think we'd, you know, for our purposes, we just need to make sure it's not create, it's not adding a drainage issue to any of the nearby, the adjacent properties. I guess the, the, the existing parking lot is not really being altered at all, it's just gonna be the same.
Her, her building's directly on my property line, our property line. Her roof runs onto my property. Her, her water and runoff goes onto my property. I have no structures on her side of the property that deliver water to her. The driveway's pitched to the street, we'll make sure and ensure that's continued to be pitched to the street. We are putting from the new structure on the opposite side of the parking, oh, parking lot. That's where the, all the new building is gonna be. That's all taken care of and addressed with our drywall system. So whatever's there now is not gonna be any different in the future for Ms. Ashcroft's property. And again, her roof runs off onto my parking lot.
And the, the property to the other end, that's, everything's gonna have, there's gonna be gutters.
Of green space between the two, we'll have drainage, we'll have greens, it's gonna be green space, we're gonna have plantings and grass and drywells and everything we need to do to collect the additional rain from there.
And I get, you know, one of the other concerns was possible traffic in the parking lot affecting the building. I'm sure that's, that has happened. It does, I, you know, it's, although we're creating more, it's gonna be, you're adding tenants to the, the space, it's not actually altering the physical makeup of the, of the parking lot as it affects your building. It's not making it smaller at that side of the property. You know, it's, it's not making the condition worse.
Those parking areas, when Painters was in full swing on a Saturday night, would be full of Painters' customers. That's where they park, they'll park anywhere they can find a spot. So when you come down there at night, there's no parking spots. Now, they're, they're taken while people are having dinner or whatever, and then they leave. And I know the prior order had to put signs up that things, you know, private property, you know, don't park here. So several of the other property owners live in which have been doing that now too, putting signs up saying you can't park here.
I, I think that goes to prove the point that this property is not under park. If people from Painters are using it to park there, that's because there's spaces available for the tenants to use. And the point is correct, it may attribute it, we put signs there to say this is for the occupants of the building. I would advise the, there are other things to consider, not just under parking, but there's liability issues if somebody from Painters is parking on his private property and is inebriated or breaks the rank or that, you know, S issue, so he should be posting it.
And, and I would counter that we don't have any kind of issue with Painters or other people parking in my parking lot, cause I'm a hawk. How I saw Ms. Ashcroft, how I came to talk to her about her building was because she was parked in my parking lot, and I was going down Hudson Street to go to my flip house, and I noticed a car in the parking lot that didn't belong there. I went to see if it wasn't she bringing a package out from her building into my parking lot. So I've never seen people from Painters in my property. I would throw it out if I did, for the reasons that Mr. Capello stated. And to that point, I spoke to Ms. Ashcroft's sister once, and I asked her, she had her client and her parked in my parking lot. And I went to her office, I introduced myself when I bought the building about three years ago. And I said, I don't mind you using the lot, but I would like you just to sign a waiver if you're gonna have your clients releasing me from any kind of liability. She refused to, I asked her not to use my parking lot anymore. You can bring your sister in here and ask that.
Well, I, I think that's kind of, not material to.
So that's right, it's not an issue for this board.
My point is, I've never seen anybody parking in my parking lot, and I have it posted with no parking spaces.
Okay.
But prior to the posting, prior to the signs.
Signs were there since I bought it.
So just looking at the, the, the new renderings, there's an additional image of the, the front. We'd asked for more detail about plantings and how that, that green space is going to be developed. Is that, it's kinda set, but I'm just sort of curious, you're not really required to, I'm just wondering if.
We took your concern, we went back to the landscape architect. And he did beef up all the plantings in the front around the foundation perimeter. Here's a list of the plants that we posed to.
Okay, good, so it looks like there's a couple of small trees or shrubs along the sidewalk?
Well, along the sidewalk here, he has a QF, which is a pyramid English oak, three of them. He has a JS2, which is a skyrocket juniper. He has five of them. And along the parking area here, he has boxwoods. And along, he has a GM here, which is a October glory maple over here. The benches, three POs, which is Senegal nine bark. Eight MCs along the foundation, which is a spira. And grasses, creeping ruyler turf. I mean, he really went, you know, we asked him to beef up the landscaping plan, and this is what he came back with.
And again, to speak to that, I believe in the idea of like a walking village. And I was very excited about the town did up in, you know, what do you wanna call it? With that, with that little pocket park, they've got in a bunch of series of pocket parks. I think that's the trend in communities. I think young people, if you go out on Main Street, I see more people walking up and down the streets in the evening now. And that's gonna be like a nice inviting, that's, this property is like the gateway into the lower village. Put a nice park bench, nice plantings, we're gonna make it attractive. It's in my best interest to make that property attractive.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought one of the more interesting parts of the proposal was, was the, the, the green space here. I, I mean, you're certainly not required to do anything like that, or we can't ask you to do it either. Having the, the, the benches be publicly accessible. But, you know, it reminds me of sort of the way that the benches are in front of Painters. It's kind of, it's on private property, but it sort of functions as a.
And I, and I truly believe that that's.
Space to sit.
That makes the village nice, that's why, I walk, I walk down through the village almost every single night. And sometimes I have to rest.
One thing, you know, you pointed out the, in the, the photos, the, the property across the street, they have the parking, it's right next to the sidewalk, and then they have plantings right at the sidewalk, bordered, kinda, it's almost like a half fence. Is there any possibility of doing that along, the, the only thing, you know, look at the proposal, it's, it's a lot of asphalt right on the sidewalk. If you could put a line of boxwoods or something.
We do, we have. My bearings here. We, we, we will have plantings all around this. Anthony, we have plantings on this side of the sidewalk too? Right where the parking lot is?
No, over here, we can, we can.
I can absolutely put a line of plants, I'm happy with it, I thought there was. Cause we have it all boxed out here, arranged, so we can continue it straight down a block. That was my intention, if you heard the picture, I was gonna do the same thing.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a, a nice way to kind of create a separation from the parking area and the sidewalk. And then any plantings along that, that, the alley between the neighboring property?
Oh yeah, we're putting a white vinyl fence and plantings along the entire fence. That's all on the fence.
That's, oh, that's right, there's a new fence going in.
And there already is a fence, and there already is a very, very thick, let's see, the three yellow leaves, pricentia, quite high. Let's see, the three yellow leaves, uh priscinia, quite a high priscinia, you can't see through there, as it is. I'm putting a fence and nice plantings along it. And that'll be the whole length down of the of the addition.
And then the the front of the building, was the the previous proposal, was it was the main entrance on at the front?
Yes, for that one unit, the other two are inside the interior courtyard.
And it looks like you'd added a an awning above the entrance.
That was already there, there was an awning, we added, uh like you said, the scalloping, we changed the roof line from hip roof to a pitched roof, I think it looks more homey. We put shutters on the windows.
Right, it looks like this, shutters have been added and then uh.
A pitched roof rather than a hip.
Shingled. Detail up top. And then the trim line between the first and second floor. So that breaks up the volume a little bit more and then you have the uh. The jog of the of the wall.
And in reality, when I redo the, when I do this addition, I I'm gonna be redoing the whole roof on the entire building, including the existing. And the siding and you you know, I'm gonna put on those windows, I'm gonna put shutters as well and they'll all be uniform and attractive.
Does anyone have any commentary on the uh or? Very informative uh tour through the village that you provided. Very well done, it just shows that it's uh it is within the scale and. Within the, you know, the character of use in terms of parking and. Use of yards for a denser area of town.
It also doesn't appear to be exacerbating existing hazards. Okay, or contributing, I mean, it's not. It's not adding to the existing hazards, okay, that 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 we worry about with the. Proximity of homes or buildings to the sidewalk and to the road, although it might be keeping with the ones that are there, it's not extending it. Is what I would say, you know, in terms of the design and the layout.
On one of the earlier versions of of this, we had a. The same kind of breakdown between required, existing and proposed, do you remember that? Does anybody still have that? So cuz this summary breaks down between required and proposed. It was from last month. It just helps to kind of see that some of these variances are relatively minor, you know, because there there's already a pre-existing variance.
Yeah, I mean, there's six, there's six were already in place.
Six or seven, yeah.
Six were already there, so that they're. And then this one is just, you know, the east side.
Right, four out of the eleven.
Right, the east side, the parking spaces, the area that's occupied is gonna be decreased, the square footage is gonna be decreased and. The rear, the rear, no, the rear change, it's just a. East side. Parking space.
Yeah, it looks like there's sixteen parking spaces currently.
That's what was said, but sixty is what it's gonna go down to, you know, I think previously they reported eighteen, but he counted thirteen this time. But anyhow, so should have eighteen, but we're gonna say sixteen. And then the lot.
Yeah, the required, the required is eighteen.
Yeah, the lot width was the other one, you know, cuz the lot width, there was not the lot width, but the uh total setback, so you have the left side and the right side setback. Which are less than the sixty feet they're supposed to be and then you need less, you know, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I think at this time, if you're ready, you can close the public hearing.
Yeah, uh before we do this, anyone have anything they'd like to add before we close the public hearing? Uh motion to close the public hearing.
And um I know we've heard a lot tonight and I I think before we go any further, I'd recommend to the board that we break into a brief attorney-client session. Do you wanna just make a motion for that?
Make a motion to uh uh go to attorney-client session.
We are, we are still, we are streaming live, guys.
Does it tell you, do do people get the participate?
They do, I mean, somebody needs to be watching someone they raise their hands and wanna ask a question, but that is not the case today. But that's only additional, I mean, you're here, so.
Know if anybody was watching.
Two days.
Two.
Nine. Uh the rest of the week, I do. Actually, I I work Mayak in the morning, then I come here, except on Monday, then I'm here all day on Monday.
You have applications here?
No, not a lot of applications for the board now.
Lot of people doing improvements though.
Lot of mine improvement, people are swimming pools, decks, roofs, sightings, you know. Generators, solar panels, a lot of those things, and you know, additions here and there, and alterations here and there.
Uh how's Nai, is it busy?
Oh my goodness, we are busy there.
Yeah.
Big stuff, they are big.
Yeah.
They are very, very busy, but we got uh for for July, I had seventeen applications for the ARB. Seventeen.
What happened to Don Jacapino?
He retired, he's doing very well, you know, he's enjoying life.
And another guy there, what was his name?
Paul, Paul Rossi Paul is still there.
What's his name, Jack, you know Jack La 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 Best?
Oh yeah, um Kier, Killer Man.
No, Jack, the 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 spring valiant's back.
Oh, Jack Lavalas.
He's overwhelmed.
Oh, he's been extremely overwhelmed.
He's still there, they're pushing that guy to.
Oh yeah, that's why they want, they wanna get somebody that they can keep, you know, to that level, you know, that's all they.
I don't know how that guy lives, man. He died of a heart attack.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's terrible.
There's two months.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And 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 they're relentless.
Well, he wasn't prepared to take that position.
That that's a big, you need, you need five inspectors there minimum.
Fully experienced, nobody near, you don't need no trainees there, you need fully experienced inspectors.
Five.
At least, I agree. Uh yeah, it's a mess in that place. But they created that, you know, the administrators created that, that's what they really wanted, so they could do whatever they wanted to with the village.
Yeah.
And they do it.
Are you still around there or you out of there?
I resigned in February.
That's the best, the best day of your life, huh?
It was.
How about New Square, you gonna go there yet or not?
No, I'm New Square, I worked there well, New Square was good, I I left there three years ago. Yeah, but we we parted in good terms.
You could've seen his office in Nai, it overlooks the whole Hudson River, the bridge, no, it's really, it's almost amazing office.
It's the best office in.
It is, I can't believe the mayor doesn't have that.
But it's only part time, the administrator really should be the one having an office like that, they always.
Oh, they have like a full-time administrator?
They had a full-time administrator, yeah.
They're probably busy second time, yeah, that's a busy place, man.
He said seventeen applications.
Yeah, he had seventeen.
Wow, great.
Oh, you are, you are? Oh, that's right, look, nobody forgot that, you are.
Those are my people.
Yeah, I'm a bad guy.
Like herding cats.
Yeah, I was I was fifteen years in New Square.
They're busy there, boy, they're they're busy also.
Enjoy hanging out there.
You know what I like out there? You go there on a. Day or summer evening, there's thousands of kids in the street, like when I was a kid, I lived in Neywood with millions of children. And you don't see one, it's like a ghost town.
I would I would love to have the uh the scooter shop wherever they all get going because they're all like step a bike, you're right.
Those kids are all outside, all they, like when I was a kid, I'd go out after breakfast, my mom would see me take dinner, and eat lunch or something.
That is true.
Now it's like a ghost by the main, the kids, the kids. I had a kid this this winter knock on my door.
I just need a list of.
Right, the one that they have, it's got like two part ones stapled together.
I just found a list of uh.
It was on the opening, it just had these right here. Proposed ones, the lower ones, the the existing ones.
Still the easy ones.
Start with? Okay, there you go, five factors on those.
So then go through the five factors and then. I just have pictures.
Cause the original, I don't think I have the original application here, I had it with the first slot.
The application of non-internet. That's, this is all public court?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, can you, can we use this? I mean, this is the other application, but there's a couple of.
You might have it in the car. Can we get a few minutes written consent? I don't need that, I don't think it was delivered. I think I think you you do that at the end with the secret. Steve, come back. If you wanna pull it up on your phone soon, you can, it's up to you. Was it uh emailed from Megan?
It was, no.
Yeah, if you could email it to me.
You guys just need to see it, I have it on my phone.
Yeah, we got it, yeah. I was texting you, come on back, but you left your phone here, so.
I know, cuz I was in my car.
Well, that's my spot. Did it come through yet?
Yeah, okay, so what do I have to read for this?
So you're gonna read through those um eleven factors.
Oh my god. Dumb like.
Okay, and then presumably you answer no, and at the end you'll say you need four facts, and this is a negative declaration per se.
Okay, and that's separate, that's after.
You can do that before.
Let's do it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, you can do it in one breath.
Uh motion to close the uh client uh.
Yes.
And then um just proceed, next, if you wanna make the motion to approve.
Okay, uh and then do secret.
Yeah.
First, okay, uh motion to uh.
First, okay, uh, motion to uh, to vote.
To approve the the variances.
Approve the variances.
Alright, so for purposes of secret, this is an unlisted action, and the chairman will read through the EAF short form part two factors.
Okay, uh. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Should we vote on each one as we go through it?
Yeah. You don't have to do like a formal vote, but if, if you, you can say yes or no.
Uh, no. Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Uh, no. Three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit? Biking or walkway? No. Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Uh, no. Seven, will the proposed action impact existing A, public-private water supplies? Or B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important art, historic, archaeological, architectural? Or aesthetic resources? No. Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Uh, such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? No. Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. At eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No.
Alright, and based on that.
Based on that, we have a ruling of uh, negative declaration.
Pursuant to secret, yeah.
Pursue, pursue it to secret.
Um, moving on, the, I believe the county determined it was a matter of local determination.
Uh, yes, we have a, a letter from the Orange County Department of Planning dated uh, June sixth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the Department of Planning reviewed the submitted materials regarding the above appeal for area variances. Uh, while the zoning board of appeals must weigh the local issues in balancing the needs of the appellant with potential impacts on the surrounding area. It does not appear that intermunicipal or countywide impacts will result if the board finds that granting relief is warranted in this matter. County recommendation is local determination.
Alright, and with that, you can vote on each of the variances, we do have to go through each one. Uh-oh, I lost my shit.
Here, well, that's nice, Steve.
There we go. Um, okay, we're gonna start with the pre-existing uh, non-conformities. Uh, the first one is to permit a lot area of point four-two acres when the code requires one acre. Um.
Five factors on all of them.
If you wanna group these ones together and go through the five factors and maybe kinda mention each one as you go through.
Uh, so we'll do that, so one, to permit a lot area of point four-two acres when the code requires one acre. Two, to allow for a lot width of one hundred point nine one feet when the code requires one hundred and fifty feet. Three, to permit one side yard setback of point eight-five feet when the code requires thirty feet. Four, to allow a rear yard setback of point three-two feet when the code requires thirty feet. And five, to permit a distance between buildings of seven point five feet when the code requires twenty feet. Uh, regarding these uh, uh, variance applications, um. We consider whether undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties will result from the variance. Uh. Believe, while a lot of these uh, these are quite um, quite tight. It's also, as uh, was demonstrated in uh, uh, in many examples in the surrounding lots in the village. Uh, this is generally in keeping with um, uh, the character of the neighborhood. We also have to uh, determine whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible for the applicant. Uh, I think we looked at, or discussed with the applicant, uh, any, any other opportunities on the lot. Uh, for kind of locating um, the, the addition uh, elsewhere that may have a lower impact, we looked at the, the rear yard. Uh, we looked at uh, kind of moving it away from uh, the neighboring property line. Uh, there was, in both cases, there was a restriction for access on the, the rear lot. Uh, in terms of moving it away from the, the neighboring property line. There were restrictions for navigating the parking lot, it's kind of a minimum uh, width uh, that needs to be maintained. Uh, so, it, the board feels that it's, it's, it's really located in kind of the only area that that uh, it would be possible to, to locate this.
And if I can just interrupt, um, these particular variances go to the existing structures on the property, so you can't really move those.
Okay. We also looked at whether the requested variance is substantial. Uh, we feel that it, it is substantial, um. But we, we also discussed uh, making the proposal smaller. Uh, looked at the um, the floor plans uh, for the units. And it's, it's really, um, it's kind of as, as tight as it uh, can possibly be for a, a one-bedroom unit. Um, to, to make it any smaller would kind of impact the usability and safety of the unit. Um. We also looked at whether the request will have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, this was also, um, we discussed the impact to the street in terms of uh, uh. Streetscape, um, they've offered plantings, they would kind of uh, uh. Buffer the, the impact of the, the new unit and uh, create an area for, for benches. And ten, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. Uh, actually, the, the board feels that um, uh, for several of the um, for the existing non-conformities, um, such as uh. To allow a rear yard setback of point three-two feet when the code requires thirty feet. Like that uh, that's already existing, it's about as close as it could possibly get. So that, that isn't really affected by the addition, the, the proposal. It's uh, it's, it's existing, um, and it's not self-created. So, we would like to vote on, um. Approval of the existing non-conformities, we have to do each one separately?
Yeah. If you wanna go through the factors with respect to the, the new variance as well, now you can too.
Okay, um. Let's see, so for the, for the new con- non, the new confor- sorry. The proposed variances that increase or create new conformities. Uh, one, to allow for a lot area of two thousand forty-seven square feet when the code requires forty-eight hundred square feet. Um. Uh, we looked at the, the size of the neighboring and adjacent uh, lots in the neighborhood. And it seems to be keeping in character uh, with everything. Uh, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible for the applicant.
Same discussion as for the, the existing.
Yeah. Whether the requested variance is substantial, uh. No.
Yeah, relative to the rest of the variance that exists, right?
Whether the request will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh. That uh, that seems fine. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, um, it is self-created, but uh, in regard to the other um, factors, uh, we determine that's not quite as important. Uh, two, to allow a front yard setback of thirty-one point three feet when the code requires forty feet. Uh, whether the undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties will result from the variance. Uh, we felt that uh, for the, for the front yard setback, uh, it's consistent with neighboring properties. Um, uh, and is uh, similar to uh, specifically the, the adjacent to properties. Uh, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. Um. It was necessary to uh, to increase or decrease the setback at the front yard uh, in order to provide access to the, the rear two units uh, from the parking lot. Whether the requested variance is substantial, um, it is really only uh, increasing or decreasing the setback at the front yard by, I believe it's four feet. Uh, and in examining the floor plans, uh, this seemed appropriate in terms of creating circulation uh, for the units. Uh, with uh, whether the request will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, although it is, um, sort of, uh. It is coming towards the front, it, it's creating uh, a smaller front yard than exists now. Uh, the applicant has um, made an effort to create plantings and a, a a public space in front of the building, uh, that will, uh, that will counteract the, the variance. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, uh, it is self-created, uh, however, in regard to the other uh, factors, it is not determined to be substantial. Uh, three, to permit only sixteen off-street parking spaces when the code requires eighteen. Whether undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties will result from variance. Uh, we heard from uh, uh, the adjacent property owner and in the previous meeting uh, from a property owner across the street who had concerns uh, about overflow parking um, uh, affecting their ability to have parking on their properties or on street parking uh, adjacent to uh, their businesses, uh, possibly having an effect on the ability for their customers to, to access their businesses. Uh. We looked at that, we also looked at uh, whether it will actually affect, um. Will, it will create overflow parking, uh, based upon um, the neighboring properties. And it appears to be consistent with the amount of uh, parking that's provided at typical multifamily uh, units in the neighborhood. Uh, and it appears to be consistent with uh, existing situations. Uh, there's also street-side parking, uh, on-street parking, uh, at this area which uh, just based on um, our own experience, uh, is typically available uh, for use during the day and at night. Uh, so the board feels that this is, although it is a viable concern, uh, then it can be uh, negated by uh, use of public parking uh, and use of parking uh, by the owner at his adjacent properties, which uh, which he he maintains will be provided for the, for the units. Uh, whether the requested variance is substantial, uh, it's required to have eighteen uh, spaces. Sixteen are being, uh, will be provided, uh, while this is lower than is uh, required, it's, it's not terribly substantial and it's um in character with uh, neighboring towns and properties. Whether the request will have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, we uh, considered the neighboring properties, uh, there were concerns about whether traffic would uh, physically impact their building. Uh, and in the opinion of the board, it's, uh, while this may exist, it's not uh being exacerbated by the proposal. And ten, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, uh, although this is being self-created, uh, it's not uh, as important as the other factors in our consideration. Four, to allow a total side yard setback of fifteen point nine feet when the code requires sixty feet. Um. Let's see, we looked at whether undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties will result from the variance. Uh, we looked at uh, uh, the impact to the uh, the adjacent property. Um. And we don't feel that it will have a, a, a large effect, it's also being, um, uh. A large fence is being put up that will provide privacy. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible for the applicant, uh, again, we looked at uh, possibilities for uh, moving the, that wall farther away from the property. Uh, and there are restrictions based upon use of the units, uh, and the floor plan configuration. And uh, moving it away from the property line would not um, affect that area in a meaningful way. Uh, whether the requested variance is substantial. Um, we believe it is substantial, however, it can be uh, mitigated by uh, the use of fencing, landscaping, um. That can lessen the effect. Whether the request will have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, we considered um, uh, drainage at the area. Uh, that's all being directed toward, away from the property line. Uh, via gutters and leaders to a drywall. Um, it's not affecting uh, any sightlines from the neighboring properties or from the uh, streetscape. Uh, we don't believe it's going to have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Ten, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, uh, it is self-created, however, uh, based upon uh, the other factors, uh, the board does not place a great emphasis on this uh, particular uh, factor. Five, to allow a lot coverage of twenty-four point seven when the code permits only twenty percent. Um. Whether an undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties will result from the variance. Uh, this seems to be keeping in character with the neighborhood. Uh, and particularly the, the lower village where a denser, um, uh property use uh, seems to be appropriate and widespread. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible for the applicant, um. Uh, we don't believe that that is a, a possibility for this application. Whether the requested variance is substantial. Um, it is substantial, however, uh, based upon the, the first uh, factor. It seems to be appropriate. Whether the request will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, there, we examined uh, whether the, 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 the density of the lot would affect the uh, fire department's ability to uh. The density of the lot would affect the, uh, fire department's ability to, uh, to access the site. Um, that does not seem to be an issue for them. And it does not affect the, the access for the public or the occupants, uh, to the site. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, uh, it is self-created, however, we do not. Based upon the, uh. Other factors, we do not, um, think this is important. And six, to allow for no building offset when the code requires, uh, five foot at forty feet. Uh, whether an undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties will result from the variance. Uh, at the previous, uh, previous iteration of the property. Uh, it was noted that the, um, the side facade was, uh. Uh, was a single straight wall, uh, although, uh, so the board requested that, uh. The, the volume is, is, uh, was broken up, uh, by an offset. While they, while it was not, uh, feasible to have a. The, uh, the offset that the code requires at five feet. Uh, we feel that it's, it, it was appropriate for, given the, um, given the side yard restrictions. Uh, and accomplishes the, uh, the, the intention of the code by breaking up the, the, the volume. Seven, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible for the applicant. Uh, again, it, uh, it's not feasible, uh, to create an offset of five feet. Uh, at this area, uh, because of restrictions of, of use and, um. And the not creating a larger or a smaller, uh. Variance at the side yard. Whether the requested variance is substantial, uh, we do not believe that it is substantial. Whether the request will have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, again, uh, the latest, um, iteration of the, uh, side facade. Creates a, uh, a, a jog in the, in the wall that, uh. Breaks up the, uh, the facade and, uh. Seems appropriate for, for the proposal. And ten, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. Uh, we believe it is self-created, but, uh, again, not, um. Terribly important given the, the other factors. I make a motion to approve the pre-exist, the five pre-existing non-conformities.
So you'll, you have to make a motion, um, to just, I know, uh, it's kind of redundant, but. Motion and then say each variance, and if you wanna add any conditions with respect to landscaping, architecture, anything like that, add that in the motion too.
Okay, a motion, uh, to approve the five pre-existing non-conformities, which are. Which are, one, to permit, to permit a lot area of point four-two acres. When the code requires one acre. Two, to allow.
So you should read one and then vote on each one.
Aye. Uh, motion to approve, uh, the pre-existing non-conformity number two. To allow for a lot width of one oh-nine point one feet when the code requires one hundred and fifty feet.
And then, e- each board member needs to either vote aye or nay.
Uh, motion to approve, uh, pre-existing non-conformity number three. To permit one side yard setback of point eight-five feet when the code requires thirty feet.
Motion second, aye.
Uh, motion to approve pre-existing non-conformity number four. To allow a rear yard setback of point three-two feet when the code requires thirty feet.
Aye.
Uh, and three, uh, motion to approve pre-existing non-conformity number five to permit a distance between buildings of seven point five feet. When the code requires twenty feet. Motion to approve, uh, the proposed variance that increase or create new conformities, number one. To allow for a lot area of two thousand forty-seven square feet when the code requires forty-eight hundred square feet. For proposed variance that increase or create new conformity, number two, to allow a front yard setback of thirty-one point three feet. When the code requires, uh, forty feet. Uh, we would like to include a condition to, uh. To approve the, the proposal as per the material submitted, uh, with, um. Upon, uh, condition of, uh, approval or modification by the planning board.
Aye, first, I'm over that.
Proposed variance number three, to permit only sixteen off-street parking spaces when the code requires eighteen. Uh, proposal to, uh, to approve.
First, move.
Four, to allow a total site, motion to approve, uh. Variance number four, to allow a si- total side yard setback of fifteen point nine feet when code requires. Uh, sixty feet, as per the, uh. As existing. Motion to approve, uh, number five, to allow a lot coverage of twenty-four point seven when the code permits only twenty percent. Motion to approve. Uh, and, motion to approve variance six, to allow for no building offset. When the code requires five feet at forty feet with the condition that, uh, uh. It's completed as, as per the material submitted, uh, upon, uh, review of the planning board.
Okay, alright.
The site plan, what is the date of the site plan that's been approved? What's site date of the site? Seven, original date is like two twelve and seven eleven.
Uh, materials approved as, uh, submitted and reviewed. Uh, with the original date, site plan date of January third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and revision date of seven eleven twenty-two.
Yep, and I think before we close the meeting, we have minutes, uh, from June to approve. Yeah, we still have to approve the minutes.
The only thing I noticed is that, um, the name Cindy Rupert on page three should, should be changed to Christine Rupert.
Oh, okay.